I'd like to call this meeting to order this evening. January 2nd, 1996, 7:30. Everyone rise for flagrant.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
I'd like to wish everybody a happy new year that's outside the rail but inside the rail and watching on Channel 15 this evening for our first meeting in 1996. Welcome you all. Start off this evening with the minutes of the previous meeting of December 18th. Motion is in order to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any debate? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opportunity to go outside the rail to discuss any item that is not on the agenda No one here has an item that's not already on the agenda? Okay, we'll move on to communications from the mayor. We have a request for the mayor to present the state of the city address at our first meeting in February.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes, the motion carries. We have an additional item from the mayor. Additional sworn officer for the police department, it's in the packet.
We refer to finance.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, refer to finance. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes, the motion carries. Moving into reports from standing committees. Alderman Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Charter and Ordinance Committee met December 20th. All committee members were present. Also present were members of the school board, Dr. Brothers, and David Walk. We discussed the school children first scholarship. Mayor Wenberg led the discussion and shared his proposal with those present and answered all questions regarding the proposed ballot item. After approximately two hours of discussion, the committee's motion is to place on the ballot the proposed charter amendment, school children first scholarship, with the issue to remain in the Charter and Ordinance Committee to allow further discussion with the mayor and the members of the school department, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made in second.
Also, Mr. Chairman, at this time I'd like to go outside the rail to Mayor Wenberg. He has some proposed amendments that he wishes to offer.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I want to thank the committee for your support of this proposal. Folks who were in attendance at the committee meeting will remember that there were several issues, quite a few issues that were raised on this. A number of them dealt with, I think, in the discussion and meeting. A number of them requiring further consideration. Because of the schedule requiring the board to place or to vote to place any proposed charter amendments, in tonight's meeting on the ballot, the committee did not have a subsequent opportunity to review any fine-tuning adjustments to the proposal which the debate may have suggested. So I would like to suggest, in the interest of time, to the board that what has been handed out on those entered desks at the beginning of the meeting represents the same version that was passed by the committee with the following amendments. And if the board is so inclined to amend the proposal at the board, by the full board this evening, prior to taking final action regarding the question on the ballot. This proposal is precisely the same as before with the exception that the underlying language is new language that would be inserted and that the bold-faced and bracketed language is a language that has been previously seen by the committee and by the board but that would be deleted. The first change is on lines 8, 9, and 10, which is the inclusion, 8, 9, 10, and 11, excuse me, which is the addition of a new sentence. That sentence reads as follows: "Nothing contained herein shall be construed to obligate the City of Rutland or any of Rutland City or the Rutland City School Department to pay any sums in excess of the face value of the school children first scholarship." One of the issues that was raised in the committee meeting was a concern that especially for special education students, there may be a concern that the opportunity to take a $1,500 or something in that vicinity scholarship to a private school might inadvertently obligate the city schools to additional expenses for special education or perhaps for other students. That has been thoroughly investigated by Assistant City Attorney Brislin, and I know we've had a number of conversations with Frank, and concluded that probably there is very little risk that the original language in fact represents in this regard. I'll let the attorney speak to the legal issues, it's not my bailiwick. But that the concern in fact was a legitimate one. While investigation seems to indicate that the language as originally proposed is sufficient, no one could come up with a good reason not to put in a sentence which absolutely clearly states the intent. And that's what that sentence does, is to very clearly state the intent that the scholarship itself is the sum total of what is offered and that no obligations beyond that would be appropriate. That doesn't mean that other laws or other obligations, federal law in some ways, might not, as they currently do, place obligation on the schools. But nothing by this act would be obligated beyond this. If federal law or some other laws required, as is currently the case, then that would change. So that was the first point. And I'll let you folks study that or debate it. I'll just finish by explaining the second one, which is several kind of housekeeping changes on line 16, 17, and 18. I'll read the way it would read as amended. I'm going to start with the beginning of the sentence on line 14. "Notwithstanding the provisions in the general laws of the State of Vermont, general state aid education grants, open parentheses, foundation grants, close parentheses, to the City of Rutland Public Schools shall be calculated, treating each student receiving a school children first scholarship as a full weight of one toward the city public schools' average daily membership." That would be the final version if the amendment were approved. The purpose of that is that the school department asked the State Department of Education to review the proposal and do some financial analysis, which they did, which has been extremely helpful. The Department of Education saw some ambiguity in the original language, which was certainly not intended but was understandable given that they hadn't had the opportunity to hear any of the discussion. It seemed appropriate, and quite frankly was suggested by the people at the State Department of Education, to change that language to clarify and specify precisely the intent. This language, as I just read it, is precisely the same as what was intended in the original proposal, but the language is more precise, especially from the standpoint of state aid education, and so therefore should clear up any potential misunderstandings that might remain. And that's the sum total of the amendments as proposed. I'd be happy to speak to the issue or answer any questions, but I'll stop there.
Alderman Davis.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to move to amend my motion to include these proposed charter amendments in the school children first scholarship.
Who the maker or the second accept that? Okay.
My concern is, as procedure, do we need to suspend the rules and take up these amendment changes because it wasn't discussed in committee, or can we vote it as one package?
I have conflict regarding this issue. Any questions associated with procedure, the proposal itself should be handled by Henry, that's why he's here this evening.
What direct question have you?
It's a matter which is frequently done on front of the floor at this time, and it does not need to be referred back to committee or as the rule suspension.
Okay, just want to make sure we're doing it right.
Okay, other questions inside the rail? The motion or the amendments? Are there people outside the rail that would, before this board votes on this, to send it to the voters to vote on in the March ballot? And there's going to be an opportunity on January 29th at 5:15 and February 5th at 7:00, you need to come before this board in official hearing capacity to speak to this issue, but some of you came out in a very cold winter night, and if you would like to speak on this issue, we would welcome you to do so at this time, knowing you all have two other opportunities to do so. Ma'am, would you give your name and your address for the record, please?
My name is Linda Remington. My address is 115 East Street in Rutland. And I come as co-president of the Rutland Teachers Association, also as a Rutland City taxpayer and a parent. I've been teaching in our school system for 26 years, and during that time, our school system is, everyone is well aware, has gone through many, many changes, from a time when we had eight elementary schools now to two primary schools. The one thing that was a constant for many years was instability. Most of it due to things outside of the school system. Population growth, population decline, population growth, financial restraints. We have worked very, very hard, the school board, the administration, the teachers, and the community, over the last seven years, to finally get Rutland City at a stable place in their school system. With the opening of the new high school, the middle school, the intermediate school, and the two primary schools, and the closing of schools that have been in the system for eight years, this September was going to be, or it has been, the first time that it is stable. When I read about the voucher system, I was really dismayed in the sense that we finally were able to tell Rutland City people, "Your child will be here, and moving to here, and moving to here." And now there's a new glitch in it. I know it sounds good, and I know it works in systems where they do not have a high school, where they do not have those sending schools. Certainly, there are a lot of voucher systems going on in communities that do not have the systems. Rutland City has a superb school system of its time, and has, and has had a tremendous amount of dedication, not just from September to June, all year long. And we have many times accepted children from private schools who were let go, okay? I waited for the amendments. I was waiting to hear the sentence that said that they would to abide by all the rules, which means, once the child was taken in, it was a given that child would stay the entire year, no matter what the behavior or any other learning problem. Because financially and paperwork, I can't imagine, we have children in and out all the time. There's a large percentage of our city that do not own homes, and they move three to four times in one year. They go from, would have been five elementary schools before, but with all of the work on the reorganization, have got it down to, maybe they move from northeast to northwest now. And now same children, yes, they may go to other private schools, but if they do that same type of thing, they may or they may not, I don't know, but I'm saying it's a real possibility, it happens all the time. I'm thinking of that paperwork, financial nightmare. A system sets the budget at the beginning of the year dependent on a certain amount of money, a certain number of children, and where they're going to be, at least within the city. Once you start talking about even beyond the city, it just adds that little extra. And when I read about that this was going to be for the good of the student, it sounds like it would be. But personally, I would like to see Rutland City take a statement, or you sustain, that yes, for the good of the child, there are hundreds of other ways that you can help the children in our city. Number one, by doing just what you said you did before, sitting down with the school system, instead of working against each other, working with each other, coming and asking our opinion. I'm surprised that the consultation did not take place. To me, that would have been a logical place to start, okay? And I know within the school system, the teachers and the school board have worked in the past three years, probably closer than I ever remembered them working. Instead of working against each other, you know, we started three years ago with them and us, and it is we now. And we give and take, we avoid as much as we can confrontations that don't need to happen. I would really like to see the City of Rutland do that with the school system. There are a lot of kids out there that need your support. I don't always mean just financial. One of the easiest ways that you can get support for these kids and to really get that scholarship is get the bodies of Rutland City and those schools volunteering their time and taking a real hold on those kids from primary school through the high school. So again, the voucher, you know, I'm interested in seeing the merits of it. I personally would like to see other amendments added to it if it was ever going to take place. But I think Rutland really needs to sit back and see where we've come from educationally over the last few years, where we finally are at, and do we really need, right now, when Rutland City education is at its prime, the most potential, do we really need to have Mayor Garry City? And the alderman saying, "Well, there's the school system, but, you know, I personally, and I'm not originally from Rutland." I would, for once, like to see the Rutland City say, the alderman, school board's been saying at one time, "We do have the best school system, and we're willing to support you no matter what, and what can we do to help you?" And please, if you have any question, our doors, we've been saying this for years, are always open. And we don't mean just parents. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to? Yes, sir, your name and address for the record.
My name is Peter Sue. I'm a citizen here in Rutland. I probably came down here tonight because about 18 years ago, I endorsed the voucher system. I talked to a group of Vermont legislators. The proposal was held here in Rutland, but nothing happened. I still think the voucher system is something we ought to endorse, develop, implement, because there's a lot to be said about education, as we all know. Do we have any representatives here for corrections? Or not? Do you ever hold meetings down at your corrections department down here? Eighty to eighty-five percent of the inmates down there are not high school graduates. Eighty to eighty-five percent. What does that say about our educational system? Why, in 1995? So, incidentally, do you know the per capita cost down at the Rutland Correctional System? Right now, it's about $28,000 per year. And here, you're talking about $1,500 a year to try a new approach? I suggest you hold a meeting down at the corrections department several times. Get to know those people and what they're trying to do. The voucher system, to me, may be a tool to level the playing field in education, which has needed to be leveled for some time. Right, to level that playing field. And finally, I think the voucher system may indeed help us not only to help Johnny to read and write, but also in the main to help Johnny understand right from wrong. For some reason, that concept has gone out. If you disbelieve this, again, pay a trip down to your local correctional facility. Why are those young people there? Why? Can't they tell right from wrong? Evidently not. Maybe with the voucher system, we'd have a better method of accounting. Poor Johnny, also accounting of the parents. Because it's something schools follow. It probably lies elsewhere.
Yes, sir, your name and address, please.
Rich Baker, 113 Fairview. Coming as a parent, I have three children in the public school, I believe a very strong public school, who are thriving there. I have one child that did not thrive there so well, and he's going to a private school now. Thank goodness we had an alternative that we were able to use at Mountain View School, and he is thriving there, and in one year has caught up about three years of his education. And I just, I thank God that I had this choice, and I think what the mayor's proposal could do is help more people have choice.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak this evening? Yes, sir, name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Sean Brandon. I'm a resident of the City of Rutland. I live at 20 P. Mont Drive, and I'd like to say that I also favor this proposal, this before the board. I think that it makes good sense because it will allow more parents, more options for the education of our children. I think also that the idea of competing for some of the same tax dollars will only serve to benefit the parents and our children, and quite frankly, that's a win-win proposition. And so my request here this evening is for this board to approve this proposal so that the citizens of Rutland City can go to the polls this March, and while at the polls, we can say that we think it is a good idea, or we can also say that we think it is not a good idea. And I would like to say that I think we should take this as an opportunity to really find out how the voters in the City of Rutland feel about the proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, ma'am, your name and address.
My name is Lippi Sternberg. I live at 170 Church Street. I'm here as a mother and a city resident to urge you to put this item on the ballot. I was at the committee meeting on December 20th, and at that meeting, even our superintendent of schools came forward to speak in favor of the concept of school choice. At that time, however, he urged us all to engage in a, quote, "significant comprehensive dialogue" with the goal of enhancing education throughout the community. And I would like to suggest that part of that significant dialogue must be an active and aware electorate. And what better way to begin that dialogue than by placing the issue square in front of the voters? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak before this board? Yes, sir, name and address for the record.
My name is Jack Basie, and I also am a parent of three boys, and I live at 82 Davis Street. And I also come tonight to speak to you in favor of this resolution and this proposal. I think it, again, as I said at the last time, at the last meeting we had, I think it is early yet for this proposal, but from what I've seen of it, I think it's a very good idea, it's a very creative idea, and I don't think that we ought to be afraid of new proposals just because they're new. I think it ought to be looked at and ought to be studied. I think it ought to go the next step to the voters to see how they feel about it. I wouldn't want to see it die, you know, in a committee. I'd like to see it get some exposure and see how people really feel about it. I think that it does promote choice, as several other speakers have mentioned. I think it would give some parents and some children choices that they don't have now in the range of educational alternatives that would become available to them with this plan. And I think that's something that we ought to foster and not back away from. I don't think this plan is a slap at Rutland City education or the public schools. On the contrary, I think it's an attempt to perhaps offer more options and a fuller range of educational opportunities to Rutland schoolchildren who don't perhaps have that full range now, and we shouldn't be afraid of it. Thank you.
Any other individuals would like to speak this evening? Seeing none, any further debate inside the rail before motion is voted on? Hearing none, all in favor. All in chorus.
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote's been requested.
Yes.
Gillon?
Yes.
Guusso?
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
Zatelski?
Yes.
Stafford?
Yeah.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
I'll say yes. No, it's not a tie. In a unanimous, inside the rail, we thank everybody that's--
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I believe we need to set the public hearings as long as the voters--
Okay, would you like to move that, Chairman?
I'd like to move that the public hearings be set, the first on January 29th at 5:15 and the second for February 5th at 7:00 PM, thus prior to our regular board meeting.
Second. Motion?
Excuse me, also, Mr. Chairman, we have other proposed charter amendments dealing with the school system that I would like to put into this public hearing at this time because it's the last night that we can do so. We do need to meet with the school board. These are the proposed amendments that came out of the education committee dealing with the request to remove our final approval from their budget and also their ability to borrow in anticipation. So I'd like to set the hearings at that time.
Motion's been made in second, understanding the two dates, any debate? Alderman--
That's a charter change or this is an ordinance change?
That would be a charter change.
That's not filed already, right?
It still needs to be finalized by the Charter and Ordinance Committee meeting with the school liaison committee. It's been discussed within the education committees of the school and Alderman. But if I don't set the hearings for this evening, then it won't have a chance to occur from March 29th.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes, the motion carries. Is that it on this?
That is, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, before we move on, I'd like to thank everyone this evening for coming, and there'll be another opportunity, two opportunities for discussion on this matter. We thank you very much for coming out this evening. Moving on to other standing committees, Alderman Davis, do you have anything else?
The only that I'd like to inform the committee that our next Charter and Ordinance meeting is January 8th. At that time, we will be meeting with the business people to deal with the temporary sign issue, and that'll be at 5:30 instead of 5:10.
Other standing committee reports at this time? Does anyone have any committee reports? Select committee reports? Alderman, Stafford.
I got one. Solid Place District met on December 27th. They made a change of proposed sludge hauling policy, which discussed, an agreement was reached to include the capital costs in the policy. And you have in your packet tonight a copy of the '96 budget for them. If anyone has any questions or suggestions, please get in contact with the three representatives, the mayor herself, and, oh, yeah, well, anyway, before the 15th of September of January.
Any other select committee reports this evening? Okay, moving on to reports, petitions, letters, communication. First one is a request from Brock to go on the ballot. Request was also $9,115 last year. Motion is in order to place on the ballot.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion on the request? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes, the motion carries. There's a letter from Harold--
Please note my abstention on the rock.
Okay, so noted for the record. Number two, Harold Burbank, Town of Chester, speeding ticket.
Receiving file, Mr. Chairman. Is that good?
Any debate? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes, the motion carries. There's a letter dated September 20th from Vermont municipal officials.
I'd like to put that in the committee, please.
Second.
Motion's been made in second for the community development. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes, the motion carries. Vermont Green update, number 13 in your packet.
Will do for the mayor.
Second. Motion's been made in second, refer to the mayor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foes, the motion carries. Act 250 documents, House Center.
Will receive a place on file.
Any debate? Any debate? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes, the motion carries. Sewer Sales and Service Water Protection Plan. This plan is in the city clerk's office, if anybody would like to review it.
Will receive and place on file.
Motion made in second, any debate? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes, the motion carries. I guess we also have a copy in our packet, too. Reports, no requests this evening from the Board of Control Commissioners, is that right, Chairman? Okay. Report and letters from the Police Department. Police Department requests for drug forfeiture funds for feasibility study.
Mr. Chairman?
Alderman, Davis.
Frank, cancel.
Answer.
I'd love to suspend the rules and take this up tonight.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes, the motion carries. One abstention, one no vote. Would you like to lead the discussion, Frank?
Certainly. I, I think I can anticipate Sharon's objection, because I share it to a large degree, and I believe it probably has to do with the third part of the request proposals, which seems to request a reexamination of the issue of where the combined dispatch services will be located. Therefore, what I would like to do with this is take it up tonight. However, make clear in the motion that that is not to be part of their, I guess I don't care if I get a price board, but it's not to be any part of the expenditure. That is, we're, we're not endorsing that portion of the request. I think that the first two parts, and the price that's quoted in here certainly appear attractive, and I'd like to see this issue move forward in that, in that respect. So perhaps we can deal with it in the motion.
Alderman, Gillum.
Can we split the question? Take one and two, and drop three off?
No, why not?
It sounds like what Frank wants to do.
Because I don't play chemistry either.
Mr. Chairman, if I may--
Alderman, Davis.
And Frank is absolutely right. When I read this, when the packet arrived on Friday and I read this, if you recall, two weeks ago, I brought up an issue that I read in the Police Commission minutes, that the 911 system still seemed to be circulating within the police department. And I was concerned at that time that some mixed messages were going to be circulating. When I read this, I was sure that the message was circulated. So I spoke with Treasurer Graves, who was surprised that this even was brought to us this evening. My understanding was that the committee of the Chief of Police, Chief of Fire, myself as Public Safety, the City Treasurer, the Mayor, and Ira Earl, Emergency Management Director, were to meet to discuss this issue. That did not occur. The other issue was, I, I did have an opportunity today to speak with Chief Holmes in regards to the combined communication system. And we debated the issue again, that the 911 system, by approved by this board, will exist within the fire station, and that the goal of this RFP was to hopefully secure a public safety building, where police and fire would be housed jointly. And then to look at the issue of vacated space within the police department. My concern is, and I, I agree with Frank, that the proposal, the bid, is very comfortable. But the bid also includes the communication system, so the bid is not accurate. That issue needs to be rebid from the conversation that I've had with, not necessarily rebid, but readjusted prior to this board's approval, from the understanding that I've had with the City Treasurer. My motion was to refer this issue to the Board of Finance and Public Safety, to deal with this, and I will move that motion to refer.
Second. Motion's been made to refer. Alderman, Gruza?
I, I think they're both talking on the same frequency, is what I'm hearing here, Sharon and Frank. My only opinion about item number three on this is that, I mean, most of us can remember this building when the fire trucks were downstairs, now the city hall's there, and the city clerk's office was upstairs, now it's police. I think, proposal number one is a winner for the department. They get a real police station, or at least find out what it would cost to do one up there. You go up to the fire station, there's a lot of functional space in there, it's a real fire station. The city's spent years and years of moving recreation into old houses, or school, or, you know, borrowing from Peter, Pay Paul, kind of, with all the office space around. Let's get a real public safety building, like Alderman Davis said. And whatever, I don't mean to sound, whatever you want to call it here, playing both sides, but I, I either, I'll support a motion to refer, I'll support a motion to approve without item number three. I'd go either way, because I think you're both on the same frequency there. And I think item one is a win-win for the city, too, because we're not, I mean, one other thing I wanted to add, how many years ago was it they spent a ton of money on the first floor here? And now it's gotta be done over. And this is the point. Why keep throwing good money after bad money? So let's see about getting a real police station, and I support item one.
Alderman, Gillum, and then Alderman, Davis.
I just, I just need point of order here. Frank's amendment is superseded by refer?
Right.
Am I correct?
He didn't have a motion.
Frank didn't have a motion.
Okay, all right.
So there's only the motion to refer.
Just to make sure where I am.
Chairman, and then Frank.
The reason that I, I made the motion to refer to Finance and Public Safety is, for one reason, that the committee proposed to look at this RFP study has not had an opportunity to do so. I made a phone call to Ira Earl today, but he is on vacation till the 16th of January. So I spoke with Treasurer Graves again, who is willing to chair the meeting, and just get down to the specifics of this RFP. I understand, the, the reason this committee was even formed was to deal with the chief's concerns of, and I think some of you sit on Public Safety, and can recall the concerns that he brought up, about not dealing with the communications all the time, having this possible, that this building empty at nighttime. And that's why we formed this committee, because those concerns were legitimate, we need to deal with them. But we couldn't deal with them until we have a completion of an RFP, because we don't know yet that the fire station is the site for a public safety building. But I'm concerned, this issue three needs to be deleted, at least the communications issue, and I question that the cost via the City Treasurer needs to be readjusted.
Anything else, Frank?
I don't think we disagree, except what, what I would suggest, and, and I, I just don't see a reason to reinvent the wheel here. This letter says specifically that the interview committee unanimously agreed to recommend the contract be given, so they must have looked at something.
Different committee, Frank. This is a committee that Chief Holmes appointed, not the committee that this board approved. Different committee.
It says all members were present except Fire Chief Lloyd, and that it was a mayor's committee.
Well, but not, well, either or, different committees.
Anyway, the committee's looked at it, the police commissions looked at it, the police chiefs looked at it, and I agree that three should be deleted. My suggestion is so that they can move it ahead, and I'd also note that it's drug forfeiture funds, not tax dollars.
Right.
So that it can move forward would be that we merely word the motion that hasn't been made to approve the first two items, and that the expenditure not to exceed seven thousand thirty-five dollars, which was the total for the three. That way, if they can adjust it downwards, that's great.
All accepted. As long as three is definitely deleted.
Okay, so what just happened here, I missed a beat here, Frank?
I reneged my motion to refer.
Okay. And Frank, you did--
But I'll second Frank's motion.
I'll make a motion, and Sharon can second. I would move to--
Slide the hands here. Okay.
I would move to approve the request to expend the sum of seven thousand, to expend the sum not to exceed seven thousand thirty-five dollars for the contract with Nims, Berryhill, and Feagle. That money come from the drug forfeiture funds, and that, that contract contained Proposals one and two only, deleting Proposal Three.
Second.
Okay. Everybody clear on that, Al? Okay? Any debate on the motion? Let's be foremost. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes, the motion carries. That takes care of the official business before us, any unfinished business from our previous meeting?
I'd just like to thank the Board of Finance for putting up the railing.
That was a quick--
It looks nice, it's appropriate. Thank you.
All outside in the hallway going down?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. I was looking for a new railing in here, Sharon. I'll get the seat all the way over on the staircase. Any new business before this board? Alderman, Gruza?
David, I just want to take a moment to read a note. Rick Battles from the DPW to Local 1201 stopped by and left this off my office, asked to share with the board. The Local 1201 and DPW, they had an idea, I don't know if they can, anyone, or even the camera can pick that up. They had an idea of just doing a little something nice for the holidays, and they intended to go down in Depot Park Saturday before Christmas, I think it was the 23rd. And they sat there for a little while, and it was kind of quiet, people were busy shopping, so they decided to take and proceed around the streets. And Rick's letter says, "The Department of Public Works and Local 1201 wishes to thank Sergeant Bernard O'Keeby and the Rutland City Police Assistant Chief Gerald Van Corr and the Rutland City Fire Department, Warren Connor and the Department of Public Works, for their assistance in the first annual city employees' Christmas parade, they're calling it. On Saturday, December 23rd, the Rutland Department of Public Works set out with Santa Claus on an equipment trailer decorated with Christmas lights, a Christmas tree, and candy canes to express greetings to everyone for the holiday season. The parade route included several city streets with visits to the Rutland Regional Medical Center, Forest Park, and several city neighborhoods. We appreciate the community's support, look forward to the second annual city employees' Christmas parade." Signed, Rick Battles, President of Local 1201. And I put some public service announcements on the air about it, and then showed up, and ended up being like a spotter for it, to drive along, make sure Santa didn't fall off the trail. But it went really well, and I commend these guys. I know some people complain about the streets, but they've been getting hit with storms every day now for the last three or four weeks, and they've been plowing all night, and sanding all night, and still went out and just wished everyone a Merry Christmas. Didn't ask for any money, they just went around. It was a nice gesture from the DPW, and I commend them for doing that. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Any other unfinished business, or new business to come before this board, before we move to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes, the, all done. Thank you, everybody.
Chris, Chris, Chris.